Well, thank you for coming.
Uh, let's call it to order. City Clerk?
Councilmember Authority Member Johnson?
Present.
Ma'am?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Uh, I guess it's to you. Yes, Housing Authority, roll call please.
Authority Member Harvey?
Present.
Ma'am?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Chair Zetto? We have a quorum.
I'll make a motion to excuse Chair Zetto.
We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, tonight, the invocation is by Pastor Shane Idelman from West Side Christian Fellowship.
Dear my Father and Lord, we do ask for wisdom and guidance tonight. Lord, we ask for discernment. Lord, I pray that you guide our leaders down the best path for this city. Lord, I pray that you give them not only wisdom and discernment, Lord, but integrity in making the right decisions. Lord, we ask that you bless this place, bless this meeting, and we ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
Sure, please. Everyone, please join me, right hand over your heart, and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great unity and just as one.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some presentations tonight, as usual. The first one is Jacqueline Sweeney, is she here? Hi Jacqueline, how are you? So you got your speech?
No.
You know, when you're mayor, that's what they expect you to do. And when you get there, you gotta give a speech. Till you get there. Okay, Jacqueline Sweeney is the SOAR student of the month. For those of you who don't know what SOAR is, SOAR is the high school in Lancaster that is number four in the county, eighth in the state, and the top 1% of the nation. Every one of the students that go there went to college last year. Oh, and they graduated too, on top of that. And they went to college having already completed one year of high school, or two. Now, I don't think there's another school in America that can say that. That is truly remarkable. And they get there by working themselves to death. They don't compete in sports, they don't have clubs, they just work. But the rewards from that work are truly remarkable. And so Jacqueline heard academic, has academic, wait a minute. Your academic achievement awards for 2010 through 2013, 2009, the Visual and Performing Arts Club, the 2004 to 2011 Girl Scouts, 2007 to 2011, you know, they changed the writer, and I'm getting these wrong, but. So you could, you worked on the Special Olympics 2007 to 2011, 2009 to present, you're involved in the Church Community Service Group, and in 2012, the Debate Club President. And you want to have a career in chemical research, right? You know, one time, a few months ago, we brought the Chinese delegation over to SOAR and just walked into a classroom, and the 14-year-olds were doing recombinant DNA in bacteria, making the bacteria produce insulin. I mean, is that truly unbelievable? That's unbelievable in college, but 14? And your parents get to come up because we want to get a picture with them. Okay. Jacqueline is the oldest of four children, she is a first-generation student who, meaning, oh, first-generation student who has not allowed her cerebral palsy to become an obstacle in her quest to become a chemical researcher. You did all that fighting cerebral palsy. I have a nephew with cerebral palsy, so I have some idea of the obstacles you've had. That is truly remarkable. Her ability to juggle high school, college, assisting with the care of her younger siblings and her grandmother is a testament to her strength of character and determination to achieve her goals. She will attend Alfred University in New York. The best news is you get a $1,000 scholarship. Have your parents come down? Come on down. Step back a little bit. Oh, you think you're gonna miss her now, wait till she leaves. I thought, I thought I was gonna hospitalize my wife when they went to college. Thank you, Jacqueline. Okay. So you guys did it, right? I am so proud of you. Last time, the Youth Commission was here, I asked them, okay, you're in the Youth Commission, you know, it's a lot of fun, a little bit of work, but now do something, do something truly magnificent. And they did. Is that incredibly cool, or what? What they did is they, actually, I'd like, I'd like Mark to come in, come up and explain the extent of the program that they came up with, unless we have one of you guys that can do it, and how you executed it.
I'm the city manager, that's one of the gifts.
Okay, why don't you both come up, okay? No, you gotta come back here, because you're talking to them. This is, this is the project they came up with, and not only did they come up with it, they executed. That, that's what I find so really cool.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for letting the commission come here for you today and explain a project that we believe is truly remarkable. My name is Joshua Kay, I currently serve as the Chairman for the Lancaster Youth Commission, and this right here, to my right, is my Vice Chair, Commissioner Elder. When we were first commissioned, the mayor issued us a challenge to come up with something to help out our local community. Excited to leave our mark, and encouraged with the support from our mayor, we immediately got together to start brainstorming. All in all, we wanted to develop a project that benefit the youth in our local community. And we also wanted to do something that was not just a one-time thing, but also an incurred, a continuous program that was continually benefiting our youth. Confident in our preparations, we created the Lancaster Lunchbox. And here to speak on that more is Vice Chair Elder.
We're actually gonna have Alex Conrato begin the presentation.
How did you get out of that? That wasn't a speech.
The Lancaster Lunchbox is something that we came upon, and it's really something that's gonna change this community. It works with local elementary school students, and what we're doing is packaging bags of food for them, to give them to at the end of the weekend, when they're not receiving free introduced lunch meals. And so, this was to come about because there's a huge number of students who are dependent on the free introduced lunch program at their school. In fact, that is 76.6% for the district and 80% for the, for Sierra Elementary itself. And so, we targeted Sierra Elementary, because there's a large population of students who are actually struggling. So what we're doing essentially is bagging up food, providing them with enough food to feed them through the weekend at a low cost, which runs about $3 per bag. The bags are distributed on Friday after school, and will be continued throughout the year, and our funds for next year will be generated from local businesses and organizations.
Okay, I'm gonna have Vice Mayor Crist and Councilwoman. Councilwoman, Councilperson. All right, Amy, what do I call it? Councilwoman, councilperson? Okay, if you guys would help me, I'll read them off, and you can hand them out. We have Alex Conrato. So was the city manager playing favorites with him? I get the, I get the impression he was, is that? Thank you.
Where are you going to school? Uh, the United States Military Academy, sir.
Whoa. Hear that? United States Military Academy. Did you want to introduce your brother?
Uh, yes, standing in the back, John, if you can stand up. This is my brother, who's been close to me my entire life. He is currently attending the United States Air Force Academy.
I take it you didn't tell him how bad the first year's gonna be? See how old I am? I've already forgotten. She's not here. Thank you so much. Yeah, let's do the group. Yeah, I wanna get the sound. Great, thank you. So are we gonna do Dave now, or are we gonna do Dave later? Okay. Come on up. We have a late edition.
White House Boulevard.
Oh, okay. Quick. We just said a Brownout Highway, huh?
It's at the end, Dean Dave.
Okay. Most of you know, this is Dave McEwen. Dave McEwen has been our city attorney for so long, I could have raised three families during the.
Yeah, I'm not that much older than you are.
That's what I said, I could raise three. So how long were you the city attorney?
Since 1987.
You notice how he avoided the year? How many years is that, Dave?
It's 26.
Wow. Wow, I didn't even know people lived that long, did you? Dave McEwen has devoted over half his life to the betterment of our community, has been a vital member of the Lancaster Executive Team. He has worked with numerous council and staff members over the years to bring many businesses to Lancaster, and the city has benefited greatly from his legal expertise. Dave has been a key part in the success of many projects by working through complicated and lengthy legal issues, yet our community is not necessarily aware of his contributions. Without his knowledge, skill, insight, we would not have Lowe Center, Costco, Cinemark, Auto Mall, and Valley Central Shopping Center, or the new Kaiser facility. And I can't emphasize that enough, those, every one of those deals were extremely complicated, extremely competitive, and it really was his ability to understand redevelopment law and the ability to put a deal together that made each and every one of those happen. He is known for his ability to find solutions and maintain his focus on the ultimate goal, even when situations get very contentious and emotional. His calm demeanor keeps this discussion on an even keel. You're like me, right? If only I could do that, Dave. Dave was also a great resource for city staff. He was willing to talk out issues and problems, and help find a way forward, always with the best interests of the city as the primary goal. Dave was also a key person in keeping Mark and Jason in line, especially when it came to USC football. Retirement means no pressure, no stress. No heartache, unless you play golf. And we're pretty close to each other on weekends, we should play. And remember, Dave, as you play golf, if you're going to throw a club, it is important to throw it ahead of you, down the fairway, so you don't have to waste energy going back to pick it up. Join me as we send Dave off with the heartfelt wishes for a happy retirement, thank you, Dave, and for the hard work and support you have dedicated to our city. Turn it over to Mark.
Wait a minute, I want to give the clock first. And for the record, I've never thrown a club.
Never thrown a club? How do you play golf? There's a lot of rules. Let's get a picture. And we're gonna have a party, and it'll be a great party, right? But, yes. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Mark.
Keep going, he's about ready to cry.
Before we ask Dave to say a couple words, which you didn't know we were gonna ask him, I want to, on behalf of staff, say a couple things. I want to piggyback on what the mayor said. First off, I've always thought of Dave as a kindly older brother, without the kindly part. But what Dave does is better than any person I know, is he knows how to say yes and back it up. Jim Gilly, when he was city manager, always told me that once the city attorney says no, you gotta listen to him, that's it. City attorneys know that, and they know it's easier to say no. As the mayor always says, it's much easier to get to no than it's yes, but the good people get to yes. Dave always says yes, backs it up, and that's why we have those things. He never shied away from a hard problem. This city is indebted to him beyond what anyone in this city knows, and it, from the perspective of staff, it's been a true pleasure to work with Dave McEwen, and we've all learned so much from him. Thank you, Dave.
He really did not tell me I was gonna be talking tonight. It wasn't even on the agenda. But I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity. This is, sorry. This has been a wonderful part of my life, and I will miss it totally. But that doesn't mean I won't be teeing it up at the next Tuesday.
And you guys thought lawyers were heartless. I mean. We do have a special guest here tonight, Camille Abdul-Jabbar. Can you come up? It's from the People Helping People, and he would like to make a presentation to Mayor
Good evening. How you doing, everyone? First of all, I'd like to say it's an honor and a pleasure to be here with such honorable people, you know, the honorable mayor and the council people, and the honorable citizens of Lancaster-Palmdale area. It's a great honor, and I thank you for your time. I actually represent Masjidine Mawar D Muhammad. We are a religious group, a Muslim religious group, here in Lancaster, and our aim is to join with other people of consciousness and faith to bring about peace and harmony in production in this great city here. So we want to be a partner in doing of good, and we want to make this city, this city of Lancaster, a model community for the whole nation. So when the nation, when they look at models for, you know, citizenship and corporation, then they'll look at the city of Lancaster, and that's what we want to help do, we want to help establish that. We had a program, May 18th, Honor, Honor Reads, Honor Service, a Community Service Recognition and Awards Banquet, okay? And we wanted to honor some of the people and organizations in the community that do a service for the community, but they go unnoticed and unrecognized. And we brought this idea to the mayor, and the mayor, he supported it 100%. And we really appreciated his participation, and his, his efforts in helping make this a successful event. So we're here to present him with token of our appreciation, okay? First, I'm gonna read this letter, and then I'll present this to you. All right? Thank you, sir. Dear Honorable Mayor R. Rex Paris and Mrs. Carol Paris, we, the members of Masjidine Mawar D Muhammad, would like to thank you for your generous contribution and your spirit of conjoint service to establish wholesome community development. These helped our, helped our program to be a tremendous success and impacted all who attended. The gathering of conscious citizens of diverse circumstances and belief to honor our unsung heroes is a feat of which you, as a mayor, and your wife, as a first lady of Lancaster, can be extremely proud. Your presence at the event was surely missed, yet we understand circumstances beyond your control, and we pray to God that things get better for you and your family. Though you were unable to attend, as I am sure you know, Councilman Ken Mann represented your office with dignity and competency. He and his lovely wife were an excellent choice of representation. We would like to commend your staff, both of the city hall, as well as your law firm, for their first-rate accommodation. We would like to extend a special thanks in recognition to your executive assistant, Ms. Erica Monroe. Her professionalism, prompt follow-through, and communication skills are admirable. We would not hesitate to refer your organization to anyone. We are once again grateful and stand ready to be of service to you and the city of Lancaster. Sincerely, myself, Camille Abdul-Jabbar. Thank you, sir. I'd like to give a little shout out. Okay, and we have this award here. Let me read it for you, so, okay. R. Rex and Carol Paris, Platinum Sponsor, for Masjidine Mawar D Muhammad's 2013 Community Service Recognition and Awards Banquet. Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him, was reported to have said, "The best of you is he who's most useful to society." You are appreciated.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
You know, the, being mayor is really a remarkable opportunity. I've traveled a lot as a tourist. I recently, the past five years, been traveling, doing business on behalf of the city, and it's a different way of traveling. You get to meet a lot of people, you, you spend time in their homes, you spend a lot of time with them, making things happen. And the thing that strikes me every time is, no matter how different the culture may look, how the same we are, and how much we have the same goals, the same desires, we love our families the same way, and at the end of the day, that seems to be the one commonality for everyone, is we just want our families to be able to thrive. And the more I have the opportunity to share that with other folks, the more convinced I become that there's a lot more hope for this world than sometimes we think. Of course Shannon is doing Wedding on the Boulevard.
Good evening, city councilmembers, Mayor Paris. We have a PowerPoint ready for you in just a moment here. There we go. All right. I've worked with the Boulevard Association over the past year or so on the wedding on the Boulevard, and rather than bore you with my input, I'm going to bring up the chair of this event, without whom it could not have happened, and her name is Erica Albee. She's our Vice President and also the owner of All About Fitness, so I will let her tell you all about it.
So I can bore you. Thank you for having us. We just pulled off this wedding on the Boulevard. It was conceived last year, and given to us actually as an idea, and at the time, we were like, oh my goodness. And what it was, is that all of the businesses on the Boulevard, we actually have the ability down here on the Boulevard to put together a complete wedding, and so we decided to take on that challenge. And what we did was, we created a contest, which we did at the Antelope Valley Wedding Expo at the Fairgrounds. We had 25 couples, I should be going through this, huh? There we go. We had 25 couples submit for the contest, and from those couples, a panel of us from the Boulevard Association narrowed it down to these five couples, and then we had an independent panel of media, local media people, and independently, actually, they all came to the same, they voted for the same couple. And that couple is the one in the top right-hand corner, or if you'd like to see them in person, they're sitting right here. So what we did was, all of the businesses down here that wanted to participate got involved, and we basically put together a wedding for them. We did everything from, they got gym memberships at my gym for six months to get ready for the wedding, and it went all the way through. And it went all the way through a beach house that was donated for their honeymoon, which they returned from last week. So we literally did everything from the beginning to the end on this Boulevard, which is really cool. This is Juan and Laura Calderon. So the gown was donated by Bella Bridal. She's located up the street, right near Jeanine's. And the invitations were done by Bonds Printing. All of these elements were actually voted on by the public. So they were put on our website. And each week, a different element of the wedding was voted on. So they would pick out three choices, and then they would be voted on. Catering was done by Jeanine's Be Strong Grill. The cake was done by Ray's Cup and Cake Bake Shop. The honeymoon dress was, she had more than one, but one was donated. We did a styles now. Entertainment was provided by Renaissance Center. They actually did the entertainment that we had at the beginning when they walked down the aisle. It was really beautiful. Julie Sutton Photography did the engagement and wedding photos. Jeanine's Be Strong Grill provided the rehearsal dinner. Tuxes were provided by Tuxedo Station. Hair and makeup was done by Bella West Bond Salon, as well as the beach house was donated by Valerie, who was the owner of the salon. Desserts were provided by Forbidden Suites. Centerpieces by Lamp lighter Candles. And then the rest of us, everybody up there. Bex actually donated the use of their lounge, which was beautiful. Great place to have a wedding. We had the reception, or I'm sorry, the ceremony at the bandstand at Bex. Panache, Antelope Valley Bank, Molly Kates, Kinetic Brewing, Forge, Imperfect Balance, All About Fitness, Graphic Experience, Be Gay Jewelers, Portavino, John Dave Salon and Spa, Nothing But Bling. We all kind of came together and provided them with everything they would need, every step of the way. It was really beautiful. I mean, they had bridal shower, bachelor party, rings. I mean, it just went on and on and on. It was pretty incredible. So here's a picture of Laura with, oh, we had a horse and carriage. That was donated as well. So she was actually brought in for the ceremony on a horse and carriage. And here's a picture of her getting in at Bella West. There's a picture of our lovely couple. And then this is a picture of them in front of Bex. There'll be lots and lots of pictures coming. In fact, there are some on Facebook right now. It really, really came out just beautifully, and we're very proud of it. Thank you for your time. I would like to turn it over to Juan and Laura to say something.
Good evening, everybody. We would just like to say thank you so much for being a part of this dream that Juan and I have together to build a life together and a future and a home together. And it has just been so amazing to have the outpouring of love and affection and generosity and sincere caring from people that were just complete strangers. And from the beginning to end, it has just been an overwhelming, beautiful experience. And we could not have ever planned anything like this on our own. And we are just indebted to the city of Lancaster, the Boulevard Association, and especially Erica Albee, who has just stepped up and befriended us and poured her heart and soul into this event that we will never forget for the rest of our lives. And we are just so grateful.
And to be able to share this in the Antelope Valley, Lancaster-Palmdale, it means a lot to us that we, you know, in the beginning, we said to be able to have this wedding where we live, where we've grown up, means a lot to us. And to be able to share it with everybody and to represent this community means the world to us. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And then a token of our appreciation, Juan and I wanted to present Erica with this, which is just a little gift card for her to have some relaxation time because she has been super stressed out with us. So this is for you, Erica. We love you. And to piggyback off that token of our appreciation, we would also like to sincerely thank the Boulevard Association and just kind of give them a token of our affection for honoring us so greatly. And we would like to present Shannon with this flame award. And just to say thank you for the Boulevard's just outpouring of everything to us. And the flame is symbolic to us because the Boulevard Association has been like a light unto us in our beginning. So it says, "To the Boulevard Association, thank you for lighting our future so brightly. Love, Laura and Juan Calderon."
I just want to say one more thing. We started a tradition because we hope that this will be an event every year. I do not hope to be planning it every year, but we do hope that it happens every year. Let me show them. We, rather than passing a tiara or something like they do in a beauty pageant, we got this bracelet, which is, we started it with one charm. It's a Pandora bracelet. We started with one. Laura's gonna pick a charm to go with it. And then each year, it will be passed to each new bride, and a charm will be added to it. So we just thought it was a nice way to do that and to pass the torch each year. And anyway, thank you for your time. We really had a good time with this.
Thank you.
You know, as we're taking a picture, I just must say that Juan, you did it right. You had your wife speak first. So very good. Very well done. We had the pleasure of meeting Juan and Laura, and we couldn't have asked for a better couple to represent our city of Lancaster. This is a great tradition that the Boulevard started. And how amazing how these small businesses come together to make a dream come true for a couple here in Lancaster. And I think we should give a round of applause to all the small businesses that were a big part of this to make their dream come true. Thank you.
Okay. City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve of the minutes?
Some moved.
My second.
All in favor, just by voice?
Aye.
Consent calendar. Any items on that to be removed?
CC-8.
CC-8. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Motion to approve that consent calendar is currently comprised?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's approved of CC-8. One speaker card. Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I think CC-8's been poor, but I want to make a few comments on it. I commend the city for getting the grant from the County of Los Angeles Public Health Healthy Eating Active Living Initiative and intending to use it for engineering projects. That's a feat. And I'm not against helping children walk to school in safety. I know that over by Sunnydale Elementary School on J-8, we could use the sidewalk over there for the students. But at this time and place, I believe that the money would be better spent on law enforcement. I mean, if we can get a food initiative and turn it into a engineering initiative, we could certainly turn it into public safety for the safety of students. Because there are some schools in this community where there's drug dealing going on outside the schools. And I would prefer to have a few more sheriffs, deputies patrolling the area, or if we can't afford that, hire private security for a while. And then we could apply for grants from other federal agencies to do the engineering. But for right now, I think it would be incumbent on us to use the money for law enforcement and the safety of the children in that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on CC-8?
Move to approve CC-8.
Just a second.
Actually, if I could just make a few comments on it in general. The Heal Grant with LA County is a grant that was designed for that purpose alone, meaning for healthy eating and active life. Mr. Reeves, I applaud you for considering the safety in our community and as we do, make an effort to also make sure that our community is safe. We agree. However, the grant itself is designed for that specific program. And to be able to receive a $475,000 grant during this time is absolutely amazing. Our city has worked very hard to make this grant be approved. And it was truly a celebration when it was approved. It actually will help 29 of our Lancaster schools. That's all of the schools here in our city. It's going to help every single one of those schools. And it's not just for walking to school, but it's other, you know, eating healthy. And also, there was a program that the school district did, which was called Walking School Bus. And it was a success. It involved the community. It involved the parents. They designed it to be safe with the vest they were wearing. But this is one way, Mr. Reeves, also, that I think helps with the safety because it is involving the neighborhood. And it's involving the parents to make sure that we're overseeing what's happening in our community. And these funds are going to be able to help and educate our children, our teachers, our parents, and our community in general, how to live a healthy lifestyle, but also combine the safety in our community. So we're looking forward to this grant going into effect and our city being a big part of it and educating our community with a healthy lifestyle, but also being safe. So thank you, Mr. Reeves, for your comments.
Thank you. Is there a second?
My second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item number one. Mr. Rosie, Ian, are you presenting?
I'm gonna tag Tina, but yes. Mayor Paris and city council members, before you is a public hearing on the budget for 2013 and 2014. It will come back to you on the 25th for you to consider. Budget's a very important document. We're gonna be as pointed as we can, but it does require discussion and it does lend itself to presentation. This is the budget for the next 12 months, but it's more a story of how we've survived since 2007. It's important to go into that. As such, I'm gonna spend a bit of time on the process, where we've been and where we're going. Barbara is going to give a high-level financial summary. Jason's gonna talk about the capital improvement program. And then we'll conclude with some issues and be available for questions, clearly. First thing I'd like to do is dispel a common misconception that the individual council member's input to both city business and the budget is at council meetings. It is, but good council members get their input and put their stamp on the city day-to-day at City Hall and the community. And that's what this council does. Another way to say it, you take the time to put your work in. So consequently, at least in Lancaster, the programs, the direction, and the budget reflects council direction and priorities. And it reflects that from all year long. I'm gonna give a couple of examples, and this is for the public's benefit, so that when you see this, you realize that the folks that you elected not only put their stamp on the budget, but listened to the community. You'll hear about a volunteer program, mobile app program, streetlight initiative, and a focus on public safety effectiveness, which is directly from meetings with our mayor. You will also hear about lower citizen trash rates and waste management, recycling initiative, very importantly, increased community engagement and sponsorships, reflected in the work of Vice Mayor Crist, along with a focus on public safety effectiveness. Councilmember Smith has always had a focus on the arts, among other things, in his time on the council. Councilmembers Mann and Johnson are very focused on business programs and business support. Councilmember Mann, in fact, does the unsung job of fighting for us on the sanitation district. And Councilwoman Johnson, as you've heard, has had a big focus on education programs. You've heard about the Heal Grant, but also we have a Lancaster CARES program and other initiatives with school districts. That's a long but important way for the public to understand that the city government works because we have an engaged council. And that's what you're gonna hear in this budget. So first, we're gonna go over some of the challenges that we faced since 2007. It's important to know where you've been. Sadly, we don't have enough time to go through all the challenges, but we're gonna hit a couple of overview and highlights. Obviously, crime was way too high and going in the wrong direction. Very importantly, we were not engaging our community in solutions. We were trying to do everything ourselves. That wasn't working. We still have sales and property tax issues because they're only at 70% of their peak levels. Building permits are down more than 50%. The state dissolved redevelopment. And costs, especially contract costs like public safety and other contract costs, continue to escalate. So what has been our response? Well, to summarize, we didn't retreat. We got better. Again, there's too many to list, but let me give a quick overview. We've kept and we're down 90 positions on city staff. That's 27% of the entire staff. That saves $9 million annually. We've reduced benefits for current and future employees. We've maximized the use of restricted grant funds. And we've cut non-mission critical costs. Now, if I stop there, that would be the same presentation that every city manager in California gave to every city council. You guys went further, and that's where we've been able to do some good things during this bad time. First and foremost, we engaged the community in public safety. That's why it's down 40% crime rate. You guys didn't wait for the federal government. You had a business stimulus program and a building stimulus program, which you'll consider later. That was taking the bull by the horns and making sure our businesses, whether it was shop and dine or shop and drive, saved some of those businesses in 2008 and 2009. You established alternative energy, but you just didn't do it like everyone else is doing it. You established it as a revenue source. We've renewed downtown. You've heard about the 50 businesses, and that was incredible. But what downtown's given Lancaster is a civic identity which we were missing. That's a big deal. We've attacked the AV job shortage with Morton, BYD, Kaiser, the MAC Unit, businesses like Chevy, Subaru, Fiat. We've reduced citizens' trash rates. But more importantly, we've established recycling as a potential major revenue source, which you're gonna hear about this year. We've established many new partnerships to engage the community. Medical community and wellness homes. Incredible program done with zero budget because of the community. The faith-based community because of Impact Homes and Community Gardens. The business community, Destination Lancaster, the Downtown Association. Our school districts, CARES, Heal, anti-bullying programs, significantly expanded both neighborhood watch and business watch. That's bringing people into their own destiny. We have a partnership with the AV Fair, which is beginning to show dividends, and it's gonna show incredible dividends over the next few years. New citizen commissions and many new events, including the farmer's market. Let me talk a little bit about the new initiatives that are in this budget. First and foremost, when you hear from Barbara, the budget maintains our services, events, programs, hours of operation. It talks about the services for the public next year. That's an accomplishment not to be taken lightly and to be proud of, just to continue those services. But we're really excited about some of the things in this budget that we're able to do in a cost-effective manner. One that we're just exceptionally excited about is the Mayor Core Vista program. Because of that program, and you have a chance to approve that MOU today, we will get four Vista members for one year who will live in the city of Lancaster. And they typically are recent college graduates. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna research, develop, and implement a community-wide volunteer program. This community is so good at giving, but the organization of that program needs to happen there. This will take volunteerism in this community to the next level with that organization. And these folks will be out there talking to all the nonprofits to see what they want. And that's at very little cost to the city. We're gonna provide a home for them to live in. That's our cost. And we're gonna obviously supervise. Something that the mayor's been championing and we're really excited to bring, you're gonna hear from Monique Edwards, who spearheaded this next month, is a mobile customer service application, where citizens can report all manner of requests on their mobile phone. They can status it online in real time, but it doesn't stop there. It's gonna help us with efficiency because it will generate work orders. It will generate so we know what we should do, when we should do it. And citizens will even be able to live chat with city staff during working hours during this. Another thing that we've talked about with Edison and the mayor will remember this for the last couple of years, is city streetlights. Next year, we're gonna be the first city in Southern California, Edison's territory, to buy our streetlights back. That's 17,000 streetlights. We're gonna be able to do it through the good work of Jason and Barbara and Robert Neal and several others within what our lighting maintenance district budget is, meaning that we won't have to subsidize it anymore with other sources. And once we do that, we'll be able to use LED, solar, all the things we've wanted to do. And that was a lot of creativity on their part, and I give them a lot of credit. You'll hear from Jason in a moment about the focus in our CIP on pedestrian and bicycle safety. The mayor and the vice mayor have worked very hard with waste management. And because of that, a part of those proceeds will be able to go to fund programs at wellness homes. And that's gonna really take it to the next level. Because, believe it or not, as I said, that program has been done without a city budget. And lastly, the fees are not raised this year in the budget, but we're going to propose a fee study because you have to keep your fees up with what your services cost. However, we believe there will also be some reductions. A good example is our FOG program with restaurants. Councilman Mann has been kind enough to be working with us and looking... Councilman Mann has been kind enough to be working with us and looking at it, and I believe by structuring it different, most of our restaurants should end up paying less if we do it right. So those are some of the exciting things that we have proposed. That's an overview of the budget. Barbara will give a high-level financial overview, and then Jason will talk about capital improvement program.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and Deputy Mayor Harvey. The proposed budget, the budget that's before you at this time, reflects the culmination of not just a one- or two-month process, as Mark mentioned, but it's the culmination of direction and priorities expressed by the council throughout the year. The budget is basically a hold-the-line budget with no major changes in direction or priorities from last fiscal year. It does include the 27% reduction in staff. It includes the fiscal impact of reduced employee benefits that came from the negotiation of the contract. We have, once again, deferred capital replacement. One program that was implemented this year by Jason was evaluating our fleet for the city and, based on usage, reallocating it to people to extend their life. We did, we do have, however, need to tap into our reserves, but thankfully, we are able to replenish those thanks to the hard work by the vice mayor and mayor and Mark on negotiating our waste management contract. The proposed budget for all funds, general fund and all of our special revenue funds, is $106 million. 49% of that is operations and maintenance at $52 million. That includes our sheriff's contract. Salaries and benefits is 30% of our budget, or $32 million. $22 million goes to our capital improvement program, which is the projects that you see out in infrastructure and on the streets, and then there's a small, little bit of budget proposed for replacement of some equipment. The general fund, which funds the majority of the services that most of the citizens enjoy, the parks and the public safety, revenues are estimated at $51 million. Operating expenditures at $51.3 million. We have approximately half a million dollars of unspent bond proceeds from prior proceeds of the former redevelopment agency that will be allocated to capital projects and then transfers to other funding sources. In all, we will need to allocate $2.4 million from our reserves. That will leave, however, a 24% combined operating reserve and financial stability reserve, and that's $12.4 million.
Barbara, is that good? Where's that at with everyone else?
I would say that's a fairly healthy reserve balance. It's fairly typical to hear cities talk about reserves between 10, 15, 20. 24 is certainly on the higher end of what I see, you know, talked about on our listservs and blogs and things.
So we're in good shape?
I think we're in fairly good shape, considering where we've been and what we've been through. We're definitely seeing the things start to turn around. Sales tax results have been really strong. We did get preliminary information from the county on assessed valuation. County-wide, it's up 4%. I've heard from folks that Antelope Valley will see, and Lancaster is going to see some improvement. I always take that with a little bit of a grain of salt till we actually see it in paper, but I'm hopeful. With that, I'd like to ask Jason Connell to come up and talk about our capital improvement program.
Thank you, Barbara. Mayor and council, thanks for the opportunity to come speak to you about a $22 million capital improvement budget, which we're happy to say is a robust for this community and this council. And as you can see, the project's spread throughout the community, not only from the east side, but the west side, north and south, projects are geographically spread out. Before we get into the program, we want to talk first about the projects we've accomplished. Sometimes we get forward, we get ahead in the next year, we start looking forward, we don't look back. Some of the projects we completed last year, the American Heroes Community Park Building, that's in American Heroes Park, if you haven't seen it, it's a beautiful restoration, and hopefully you'll be seeing more of that in this budget year. Road diets with the bike lanes, the speed pumps, things of that nature in our communities. We've slowed traffic and also made it safer for the pedestrian and bicycle traveler. Pedestrian improvements at Westwood Elementary, Miller, Valley View, Joshua, Cole, Middle, Cole Middle, and Tira Bonita have also increased the safety and walkability for our students entering the schools.
Jason, can you talk a little bit about the road diets and why we've done that?
Yes, there's a couple purposes for road diets. One is that the speed of traffic oftentimes limits the pedestrian's ability to access. So a road diet will allow it to slow the traffic down as well as keep the volumes that are necessary to let traffic flow. So it's a balance between the pedestrian, the bicycle traveler, as well as the traffic or the motorized vehicles. Oftentimes, you'll see in some of our streets, the balance is out of whack. You'll see a six-lane freeway with five cars going down it and a pedestrian traveling a very long distance from the sidewalk to sidewalk. Narrowing those streets, slowing that traffic, allow that balance to exist.
Thank you.
Eldorado Park improvements, pavement maintenance system, as well as the Avenue I interchange, just to name a few. Most notable in this year's capital budget will be a $19 million to be placed in road construction and maintenance. The road construction and maintenance will include a number of different projects. Most notable is going to be the 10th Street West between Avenue L and M gap closures. There'll also be four other gap closures to eliminate the bottlenecks in the communities. The budget includes intersection improvements at I and 20th East, J-11 and Division, J-2 and 17th East, I and 10th Street West, M and 30th West, K and 30th West as well. There will be two roundabouts constructed this budget year, one at 15th Street East, one at 15th Street West, both on Lancaster Boulevard. Moreover, major road improvements and rehabilitation will occur on Avenue H between 20th and Sierra Highway, 20th Street West between Lancaster Boulevard to J, and Lancaster Boulevard between 30th and 40th Street. Most importantly, staff is recommending $6.5 million to be budgeted in road maintenance. This budget will allow staff to repair 60 lane miles of roadway. The projects will be strategically selected to assure longevity of our road system and address the most notable, visible, and reoccurring problems on our streets. This maintenance program also directly addresses the item which more council is most familiar with, as you receive the most calls and we receive the most response, is hot holes, maintenance, and general street care. And again, that's 60 road miles, 60 lane miles of that improvements. Not only replace the high-pry maintenance, we are doing a portion of this within-house staff, further stretching that $6.5 million. In keeping with the healthy living standard, staff is recommending pedestrian, bikeway, and walkability projects to improve walkability, bikeway, and student safety. The pedestrian improvements at schools will allow students to walk to and from school in a much safer and more accessible manner. Lancaster High School, Mariposa School, Endeavor Middle School, Sierra Elementary, Discovery School will all be receiving pedestrian improvements. And staff will be constructing the Woodlands Trail, and this is a meandering trail connecting Trend Community Garden to Antelope Valley College. And last but not least, we are recommending two historic preservation projects. The rehabilitation of the Cedar Center on the Boulevard, as well as the Western Hotel will be getting a new paint job and some other improvements. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mark. If you have any questions, I'll be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara and Jason. We're going to finish the presentation with a discussion of future challenges, meeting those future challenges, and primarily discussion on public safety because it is fully 50% of your general fund budget, and any budget should include a discussion on public safety. The reason it deserves a discussion is because public safety is not simply cutting or increasing a budget. That's the old paradigm, which didn't work. Throw money at it and stand back and expect the Sheriff's Department to fix crime. That doesn't work. Doesn't work. However much money you have and throw at it, it just doesn't work. What works is being efficient and engaging your community. The Criminal Justice Commission is a great example of that, and we'll talk about that in a second. The payoff window for public safety is effectiveness. It's, are you reducing crime? I want to report to you that under new captain, I guess you're still a new captain, Pat Nelson, Operations Lieutenant Craigor, and our public safety staff led by Lee Durico, not only they're being very efficient, but we're truly engaging the community, crime is down 7.8% through the first five months of 2013. That's because we've involved everyone.
Is that in addition to the 40% that were already down?
Yeah, that would. It's for a three-month period, so when it rolls out, yes, absolutely. And that's a good point. That's given all of the challenges that you read about in the paper revolving doors for incarceration, et cetera. That's truly an amazing feat, and we'll get to some of that in a second and how. We wanted to build on that, so how do we build the public safety plan? First and foremost, you talk to your captain, and you design a deployment that meets his needs and will continue to reduce crime. Just as important is leveraging the community. People should come to the Criminal Justice Commission meetings and see what happens. You have high-level people up there representing their different agencies who have a direct impact on our public safety. So you have a force multiplier of not just the city caring about public safety, it's the community and the agencies and the schools. I always do my mea culpa with Mayor Paris on this. One of our first discussions was about commissions, and every time I talk about the commissions, I say I was wrong. It's one of the best things that's ever happened to this city, to get people involved. We also leverage technology. Well, first off, I skipped that. We use our businesses. Larceny and theft are a big driver, so we're directly engaging those businesses to reduce larceny and thefts, which will have a big reduction. Next thing is taking advantage of technology. Leaps has been well talked about, but what people may not realize about leaps is it's used on Friday and Saturday nights to help the Sheriff's Department deal with parties and deal with large gatherings and such, so that the response times are quicker, but also the deployment is appropriate for the situation. That's a good use of that. Another thing that the mayor and Sheriff Baca jointly did was name Lancaster the research and development center for Los Angeles County. That has a miriam of benefits. One, people may not even know, we're one of five cities in the United States testing something called Star Chaser, which is essentially a program that in a car chase, you can tag the car that you're chasing with a GPS signal, and it will never get away. That helps in terms of how you follow, how the Sheriff's Department, and it makes our streets safer. That's just two examples of technology. The plan leverages incredible work of our specialized teams. It also looks for efficiencies. Before, we spent over half a million dollars on what was called supplemental operations. All that was is just thinking something's going to happen and throwing money at it. Now, through the work of Jim Cobalt, our Sheriff's Department and such, we're able to predetermine where and when things are going to happen and deploy appropriately with our existing sources, saving money. And we never fund, we never budget grants until we have them. There's no grants in this public safety budget. We know we're going to get $300,000 this year in some grants, but it will not be budgeted till you approve it. The biggest part of the process started as the biggest negative, but ended up positive. In our meetings over the last several months, in particular, the mayor and vice mayor have shared their concerns about the impact of county budget cuts on the sheriff's contract, our deployment in general, and Lancaster in particular. The county supervisors, with the notable exception of our supervisor, Mr. Antonovich, have cut the Sheriff's Department budget too much, yet still expect all of the unincorporated areas and everything to remain the same. They don't want to pay for it, but they expect the sheriff to do it.
Can I interrupt you?
Absolutely.
Real quick. Could I call the captain up?
Absolutely.
Got a question. Could you explain CARPing to me?
CARPing is an acronym for a cadre of administrative resource personnel. It's kind of a fancy way of saying that those that are assigned to different administrative positions work a portion of what they would normally be doing in their job, whether it be a detective position, an administrative position such as the operations sergeant or lieutenant, and they are reassigned to work, in the case of our station, most often in a patrol function.
Do you feel that's an effective way to run your department?
The CARP program was supposed to be a temporary program as a stopgap measure, basically. It saved roughly $30 million, I believe, the first year that it was used.
For who?
For the department and the county. But obviously--
But it's implemented by the county, correct?
Sorry?
Is it implemented by the county?
I don't know if implemented by the county would be the way to put it, but it was done as a response to the drastic budget curtailments that the Sheriff's Department experienced at the hands of the county, I'll put it that way. What it does do, there's obviously some negative aspects to it. Number one, Lancaster has one of the highest per investigator caseloads in the county. But as a result of CARPing, each of the detectives are required to work at least one shift a week in a patrol function, which obviously, if you look at their time at work, that's 20% of their time investigating, but should be used investigating cases that's being used to supplement patrol functions.
Is it effective--
Same goes for our administrative staff. I mean, even I CARP, try to CARP at least once a month, but our administrative staff is also expected to CARP once a week.
I'd like to ask Mr. Durico to come up. Hey, questions for him. I understand that the captain works for the county, but you work for us. So is this an effective and efficient way for us to handle the deployment in our department?
No. I'll explain some reasons why. What Pat is initially talking about is that the county gave the Sheriff's Department a budget cut initially three years ago of $120 million. Okay, as part of that curtailment to deal with, CARPing became a one-year process that was proposed throughout the county of Los Angeles out to the sheriff stations, as well as custody division, court services division, transportation services division. So, you know, the Sheriff's Department is the largest sheriff's department in the free world. It's a giant department. $120 million, if you look at their budget, doesn't seem very, very large based on the size of their budget, but the impact was detrimental for us because what CARPing does is it takes these detective items and these administrative items that are paid through overhead through our contract. So if you take, for example, one deputy sheriff, and this is just a basic deputy sheriff, not some specialized or a detective item or bonus item, costs the city of Lancaster with liability about $244,000 a year. Okay? The deputy doesn't make $244,000 a year. Deputies don't make anywhere near that, okay? So that involves all the overhead items, support staff, radio cars, all those things that come along with that. Now, basically, what you're doing is you're taking detectives who are part of that overhead cost, and we're putting them out into the field. So it affects us a couple ways. It affects us from the standpoint that those items are supposed to be inclusive based in our contract cost, that we're now, it's almost like we're being double-dipped here. Secondly, it is, is it impacts their solvency rate. You know, it's been a huge effort and a tremendous effort for the last several years to impact crime in this community, and we have all seen how that's worked out very well for the quality of life as it's based here. Managing this with our contract minutes, so Captain Nelson has to maintain us to anywhere 98% of our full contract minutes, and that's based on our contract, this is effectively taking items from our overhead to the tune of about 50 items a week. So that's, we have 50 overhead items a week that are being utilized to fulfill contract minutes within the city of Lancaster and the unincorporated county.
Is this being done countywide?
Yes. It's a countywide program. In fact, a lot of the COPS Bureau teams that we have through, like the Antelope Valley Crime Fighting Initiative and everything, are CARPing as well in other parts to fill vacancies in court services or transportation services bureau or other agencies throughout the county.
What are we doing about it?
Well, I think the thing is, is this is, you know, the sheriff has buried the burden of this, and this has actually become an accepted practice now, the two years following the initial budget cut where the CAO has recognized that this has saved over $30 million a year to the county's budget. So now they've just incorporated it. At the last city managers' conference, we all got a increase, cost increase, which we've incurred each year. We did get a hiatus for the liability trust fund for 18 months, but it's a fund we pay for, so it's not really any savings for us because all the contract cities are in it collectively. It's just we got a hiatus for 18 months. This issue is, is it's continued through this year, but the deputies haven't gotten a raise in five years. Okay, so where's that cost increase being incurred at? Where's the issue? Because the liability fund is separate from what the contract cost is. But this is something that's been implemented by-- what the contract cost is. So, but this is something that's been implemented by the county. This is the sheriff is being dealt the hand that he's being dealt and trying to deal with that and manage that as a resource. Now actively, the last two years, the CAO has actually talked about CARPing as being an effective management tool for their budget reduction, and has actually proposed another reduction to the sheriff for the third year in a row as far, and to the tune of millions of dollars. At this point, to make the sheriff whole of where they were three years ago would be in the hundreds of millions of dollars just to get them back to the staffing level they were three years ago.
Okay, specific question. Next year, with this budget, will we have more resources to fight crime with?
Based on the negotiations that we're having right now and through our contract and dealing with the fact that we've been in deficit on our overhead, we will have more resources at the station.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you. I think that that's a good discussion, helps explain it. So I'll get to the bottom line. Our taxpayers are paying the county for items that we're not getting. We all know that. We've known it from the meetings. So you directed us, go back, send a message, we're not going to pay for what we're not getting. As you said, we started out with a deployment strategy and working a program with Captain Nelson that will help us to continue to reduce crime. We also told the county, we are no longer interested in paying for things we are not getting. Because as long as we do that, it's going to continue, as Lee said. Well, I'm happy to report and give full credit to Pat Nelson, Lieutenant Krager, Brenda Gamelowski, and especially Lee Derico, that through dogged efforts, we are going to end up paying less, and the county is going to provide us with seven additional items, four sworn and three civilian. So we'll be able to, that's how we're going to get to, as you said, have the same resources. Because we've, the message was loud and clear. And again, let me repeat, we will pay less, the county will pay more, and I'm forever indebted to have a sheriff department and a captain and a lieutenant and a public safety staff that are loyal to Lancaster and its citizens versus the organizations that they work for. That's a lot to say for Sheriff's Department, and I, Pat should be commended in his staff.
He's done a wonderful job at the station. He really has. He's, I mean, the morale over at the station has really changed. It's, you know, and my hat's off to you. You've done a wonderful job over there in implementing everything that you do.
And the other thing I like about Pat is, when you say, he knows where the payoff window is, which is crime. He looks at the crime stats every day. He can tell you what's going up, what's going down. And when you look at it, something tamps up, it gets tamped down. So we have a really good station right now and a really good public safety team under Lee Derico that I don't think gets appreciated as much as it should. This is a big win for the city of Lancaster. I'm going to talk about a couple other quick things as challenges, and then we'll conclude. Barbara talked about, we still do run a budget deficit. We have to use reserves. We're able to control that, which is good. However, we have to either increase revenues or decrease costs, continue that. We have to replenish our reserves. We may be in a decent position compared to other cities, but we need to get to pre-2007 reserve levels. You can never have too much in a reserve. We have not let the poor economic conditions or the dissolution of redevelopment define us. It's challenged and inspired the council staff and the whole city. That has to continue. We have to be able to come up with more programs like wellness homes because the situation economically is not going to get better markedly in the Antelope Valley over the next 12 months. We can't plan on that. We have to plan on, we are where we are. We are excited about some of the new initiatives we talked about. I hope that doesn't get lost in all discussion, but those are, as the mayor is fond of saying, two or three of those are really game changers. They're really things that have done right, will improve immensely this community. Want to thank the council for its leadership and stewardship. It's an honor and a privilege to work with each and every one of you. I'd like to thank the staff, who for years has come up with ways to reduce costs and be more efficient. Special thanks to Barbara Boswell, Pam Statsman, Nicole Rizzo, Tess Epling, Trevon Barber, for an amazing finance department in this city. I honestly don't know, I know I wouldn't be here by now, but I honestly don't know where I or this city would be without our finance department and the truly amazing work that they do for the city of Lancaster, and I just, I choke up when I think about it. You will have the budget before you on the 25th for consideration and adoption before the start of the new fiscal year. Again, thank you, and we're here to answer any questions or discussions you might have. Any questions?
No, just very nicely done, and I think we all agree with you, Mark, as Barbara's been amazing at what you do. And those numbers aren't lined up, that's where we get confused. But you do an amazing job. You're very passionate about what you do, and it shows, and we thank you. And to the rest of the staff, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Barbara, thank you for keeping us solvent.
I hate bankruptcy court.
Michael Reeves.
Mayor Perez, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. What you've just seen is the perfect illustration of what's going on in this country right now. Things are so complicated, and there's so much mumbo jumbo about budgets that people don't even know what's going on. I would go back to square one. It's incumbent on this council to develop the budget, not the city manager. We should have boards here. You should be going through this budget, item by item. You formulate the budget, not the city manager's office. That's the way we do city government. There's life outside the Boulevard here. There's people that are concerned about crime in this city. They're concerned about streets. They're concerned about schools. We have all these projects going on. They don't address the real root of the problem, and we can simplify this. If you have to stay here all night long to midnight to develop a budget, go down item by item, and you okay the budget, not the city manager. As for the discussion about the crime rate, that is the reported crime rate. What is the real crime rate in this city? I bet you half the crime in this city is not even reported. And also, the Capitol report, we have bike paths all over this town that nobody rides on, and now we want to spend a million dollars on East Side and the West Side to put a roundabout at 15th, 15th West and Lancaster, right down where the traffic goes to the hospital and is horrible at night. That's a million dollars, and we complain about we're going to be short a couple million for the reserve, we're going to use it for the budget. Well, that's where your money's going. And also, another thing, there was no attachment on this thing, on the budget. 36% of the money comes from sales tax, 28% comes from property taxes, that 64% of the revenue comes from there. Where does the other money come from? We need a pie graph. We need to have statistics. We need boards here for you go down item by item on this budget before you approve it, so the people in this community have confidence, not just get up here and pat each other on the back. And I know Mark's a great guy. He's very helpful. We have a great staff, but we can do better in preparing a budget for this city.
Michael, you need to buy a bicycle.
Thank you, Michael.
I, can I respond to that just a little bit, just?
Somebody should.
I, I don't know about the rest of the council--
What are you asking him for?
I was actually asking you. I sat in budget meetings. I sat in it because of the Brown Act, only two of us can go in. I've been in probably 10 different budget meetings, and I'll say it to you, line by line, okay? That's what we went through, line by line on every one of them. I sat in it with Councilwoman Johnson, and we went through it. We looked through everything. That's what we do. So I know that the other council members have done the same thing, but just for the general public, we do go through it line by line. We do ask the hard questions. That's how we got the additional resources from the Sheriff's Department. That's why we've done other things. It's just, it's a good process like it is, but we do go line by line.
I agree very much so. I recall sitting there and literally going line by line, and we would stop immediately if we had any questions, and if we needed to repeat ourselves, we would. There were many areas that we did have questions on, and they were answered or they were brought back to us once the research was done. So it wasn't something that we just wanted to see beautiful pie charts with beautiful colors. It's something serious, and we took it serious. We took it as if it's our own money. That's how I was always, always ran everything that I did is it's my money, no matter whose it is, and that's how I run it, and I love to stretch a dollar. I'm known for being tight, and so is Marv. And we made sure that every line we went through, we had questions if needed, so.
Yeah, one last thing. I think I was actually one of the first, first individuals representing the council that went through budget briefing, and there was a lot of heated discussions about where we sat with dollars. I know that Mark and I and Barbara had deliberated quite a bit about how we should deal with the current budget that we have with the Sheriff's Department. And unfortunately, just because of, again, because of the Brown Act, I think we were all, individually, we met, whether it was the mayor by himself, and I think obviously Sandra and Marvin went together. But sometimes I think that maybe there's a misunderstanding, and I know that when we get an initial presentation like this, there may be some thought process that, oh, I guess that's all that we've seen is somebody gets up, speaks, we talk about maybe things that took place in the past or we're going to in the future. No, no, no. It's far much more comprehensive than that. And I'm real clear that where we got to the 2013, 14 budget was out of several meetings, and I know that specifically the dollars spent in regards to fighting crime in this city was a fairly sizable topic, as it is part of, the largest part of our budget.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, I just wanted to speak my mind, so, thank you.
Anyone else? I would like to say that I went line by line. I wasn't in their meeting. I was in my own meeting with them. But about the fourth line, I fell asleep. I bet it was the most boring thing I've ever experienced in my whole life, and that's the truth of it. I think we have an incredibly competent staff, which I rely on. I think I also have an incredibly competent council. And quite frankly, these two go line by line. I'm not a line by line person, nor will I ever be. And I just wanted to clear the record because I didn't want to sit up here feeling like a fraud. Thank you. Is there a motion? Oh, I got to close the public hearing. It's closed. Is there a motion?
I don't think we're doing a motion. We're just receiving--
Oh, yeah, we did on the 25th. Okay. And then on the 25th, you can come back and yell at me for not going line by line, Michael. It'd be perfect. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I think you have to direct us to come back on the 25th, so.
You mean if I don't direct you, then I don't have to do it anymore?
That didn't work out like I had planned.
You are hereby directed to come back on June 25th, 2013, and if anybody has the desire to go line by line with you, make yourself available. I'll make that motion.
I second.
As always, we are available for Mr. Reeves or anyone. The budget's available, and we'll be happy for the next two weeks to do anything, talk to anyone about it.
We vote, correct?
I want you to quit giving me misinformation. Let's vote. And it's unanimous. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Look forward to you coming back. Okay, thank you. Shannon, are you doing that? Oh, let's open the public hearing? You actually got to say that, huh?
Yeah.
Really? Five years, I've never said it.
Hello again, Mayor Perez, city council members. The item before you tonight asks you to renew the downtown Lancaster Parking and Business Improvement District, or bid. Now, this is not to be confused with the P-bid, which you acted upon at your last meeting. This is continuing the existing bid. Now, this has been in place since 1989, and it consists of a fee charged to business owners in conjunction with their business license fee each year, and it ranges anywhere from $60 to $300 based on where you're located and the size of your business, as well as the type of your business. So the, we have proposed no changes in the fee structure for this year, so this is simply continuing what the Boulevard Association has done for the last several decades, actually. So this funds a number of activities, including advertising promotions, the wedding on the Boulevard that we just discussed, and other activities. And this will not, when the P-bid, assuming the P-bid is enacted, this would be repealed at the end of the calendar year, and that would replace it. So to talk to you a little bit more about what we've done in the past year is Erica Albee.
I was already here.
We haven't heard you.
I know, huh? We just wanted to say that having the bid in place has made it possible to do several things over the years, obviously many things. We've added a couple of things this year. The wedding on the Boulevard was added. Last Christmas, we added a, what we hope to become an annual choral competition, which we had high school choruses come in, or choirs, and come, compete, and we're hoping to expand that as we go. She didn't give me paper to talk this time. We just want to keep everything in place. We don't have any big fiscal changes to our budget. We're just continuing with what we're doing right now. The board is in place as it has been. It's kind of continuing with the status choral for the time being until the P-bid gets enacted. But we do, we do obviously need the funds that we have currently, even though it's not enough to do everything we want to do. It's enough to do the things we've been doing, and we'd like to continue with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one speaker card, Michael Reeves.
Mayor Perez, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose this because I think that pre-enterprise, the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce can do a better job of promoting the city without assessing the property owners and the renters. According to the attachment to PH2, the benefit assessment authorized by this resolution will be billed by the city as of July 1st of each fiscal year with the annual business license fee, et cetera. So I don't know how many business owners right now can take any more taxes, or property owners can take any more taxes, even if they're authorized and they agree to it. I think we're doing a disservice. I would, I would give the new person that's going to run the Chamber of Commerce the opportunity to see if she can improve the Boulevard at no cost to the people who have businesses there before I assess these people any more taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
I think she'd like to speak on what Mr. Reeves had just said.
Roy, come on up.
I just want to answer. I've been in business almost eight years on this Boulevard, and I think we pay $60 a year into this bid. I do work hard, I will say that. I put a lot more effort than I do money into it, but this is not, it doesn't have to do with the chamber. The chamber is a private organization. This is the businesses paying into a fund that we all agree is something that we need to do things, to create a nice area down here, and it's only in the downtown area. It does not affect property owners. It does not affect anybody outside the downtown area. So as a business owner, I feel like I have the right to speak on that, and I do believe that it is something that is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number 13-24.
Second?
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business item one. And Calvin, you're doing this? This is really cool. Pay attention to this. This is a game changer.
Thank you, Mayor Perez, and the members of the city council. You're right, this is a game changer, and a lot of this has to do with our community in Lancaster. We're a community of caring and giving people, where our community really looks towards volunteerism to build and strengthen it. Couple of great examples we have are-- Couple of great examples we have are the community homes and the wellness homes that are spread throughout the city. They're operated by hundreds of volunteers from Neighborhood Impact and the Antelope Valley Partners for Health. In addition, we've got two other city-sponsored programs that are heavily successful because of the volunteers that we have here. We have the Unite Lancaster program where residents actually are empowered to submit applications, to submit projects that they themselves would want to do in their own neighborhoods to strengthen them, as well as, of course, our Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, where we have thousands of volunteers going out on that day to provide community service. One of the challenges that we've had from the City Council was to try to put together a volunteer program community-wide. And as you heard in the budget, we tried to do this to try to do more with less. And in our efforts as a staff, we took that to heart and started looking at the different partnerships that we could create. And in that search, we discovered the National and Community Service, or the Corporation for National and Community Service, commonly known as AmeriCorps Vista. To become an AmeriCorps Vista sponsor, though, you've got to compete and submit an application with a thousand of other governmental agencies and nonprofit organizations for the limited funding and Vista members that are available out there. And I'm pleased tonight to announce that the National Community Service Corporation has awarded the City of Lancaster an AmeriCorps Vista sponsorship. And that sponsorship would help to create and develop and initiate the volunteer community-wide program. And tonight, you have before you the memorandum of agreement that would solidify that partnership with AmeriCorps Vista and the City of Lancaster. And to tell you a little bit more about that program and how it works is Louise Garibay, who was instrumental in securing that sponsorship program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This partnership is very exciting because it's gonna provide the city with some valuable resources. That's not only gonna help us develop this volunteer program, but also provide additional help to our local nonprofit community. You know, as Kelvin touched upon a little bit earlier, the city's gotten really good at bringing and connecting individuals, businesses, and organizations together, those that really wanna make a difference in our community, and connecting them with those individuals and neighborhoods that have the biggest need. And we believe that this Vista program will allow us to explore more ways where we can expand these types of programs.
Louise, hold on.
Yeah.
Go back. Who shaved his beard?
We'll work on the photoshopping for you next time. Looks more like him. As I was saying, for those aren't familiar with the Vista program, stands for Volunteers in Service to America. It's a national program where individuals dedicate a year of their lives to help develop programs that fight illiteracy, improve health services, assist veterans, and low-income communities. While the Corporation for National and Community Service covers most of the costs associated with the Vista program, they do ask for Vista sponsors to come up with some of the cost-share options. And as you can see from the break in there, it could be upwards of $30,000 per Vista. However, what we've done is we're working with our Housing and Neighborhood Revalization Department to provide, to instead utilize one of the city's existing assets, which is one of these homes downtown, and provide housing for these Vista members. This will not only keep our costs, our out-of-pocket costs extremely low, but we believe that living in a vibrant downtown like ours will help us recruit better-quality Vistas to Lancaster. The next steps in this process, if you approve the memorandum of agreement tonight, is we can begin the Vista recruitment process where we will bring up to four Vista members to Lancaster. These Vistas will be slated to start as early as August of this year. Under the city's supervision and working with these Vistas, we hope to next work with the local nonprofit community and organizations to begin the research and development of this program. The Vistas would work on researching best practices, looking for new funding sources that maybe some of our local nonprofits don't know of, and really putting together recommendations on what this program should look like, which we hope to make recommendations to this group later in a few months. While we don't know what this program will be called or what this program will ultimately look like, we do hope that together we can develop a program that will really make it easy for people to get involved in our community. That and to also create new relationships within our community and enhance those existing community partnerships and develop them as we continue to go. I really want to thank, one, you guys for your patience for staying, it's been a long meeting, but also to thank our nonprofit community. As Kelvin mentioned, this is a very competitive process and we wouldn't have gotten this far if it wasn't for the help of our, of our local nonprofit community. Organizations like Grace Resources, Paving the Way Foundation, AB Partners for Health, Valley Oasis, and many, many more stepped up when it came time for us to apply for this program. And because of their help, we made it to this point tonight. I do wanna take a minute to recognize two individuals that are here today representing groups here, from the Grace Resource Center, as I'm sure you guys all know, Steve Baker, the executive director, and also from Paving the Way Foundation, Janie Hodge is also the executive director there. We're gonna have them briefly come up and talk a little bit about their support for what we're trying to do and their involvement as we move forward.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and thank you, Louise, for inviting me. I am really excited about this opportunity. I've had some experience in working with AmeriCorps Vista and they're actually a dynamic asset, a wonderful tool that will enhance the volunteer program. I think that in working with the Martin Luther King Day and events such as that, if we have the Vista volunteers to do it for a consistent year, I think that our community will have an absolute awesome experience in volunteering in our community. For me, I think this would help us to grow volunteerism in our community. It will help our community to become more aware and be more consistent in volunteering. So I thank you. I hope that you agree with me and thank you for having me.
Mayor, Council, other friends, David, enjoy your retirement. Twenty-two years ago, we weren't sure what a little food bank was gonna look like either. But thanks to the value of volunteerism, we've grown into a dynamo for this community. And it's not 'cause I'm such a cool dude, it's because we have 400 volunteers who are mentored by our 31 paid staff, most of whom are part-time. And for the notion of having some Vista folks come be part of our leadership with the city and then we can work together to help do a lot, a lot of different things with our community, with other groups, but also help some of the smaller service groups grow because they need, they need that help. Just this morning, I was with Paving the Way and we were talking about the need to get some more people involved to promote the things that we're doing there with the weed and seed and all those things. We work with the Sheriff's Department and others to reduce crime, to make our place safe, to make this be a great place to continue to live. So I hope you'll support this. I am giving all my full support to it. I have a board meeting tomorrow. We'll be talking about how we can get involved, but we wanna support these four individuals that come up and I hope we'll be able to even have more later. It'll be a great experience for all of us, so, thank you.
So with that, thank you very much for your time and Kelvin and I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No, it's just a very exciting program, looking forward to it. And I just, I say a quote by Wilson Chocho, he says, "We make a living by what we get. We make a life by what we give." And that's what the City of Lancaster is about and we're very, very excited about this program. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
That was good.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Michael Reeves.
Mayor, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I'm hesitant to get involved with a program involving the US government considering that they're having such predatory problems. This program could be abolished by the end of the year and we're gonna get involved and have staff monitor it and follow it. So, we have volunteers that volunteer at the hospital, we have people who volunteer at Grace, we have people who volunteer with the Sheriff's Department, we have volunteering all over the city. If we want to promote volunteering and not get involved with the federal government whose budget is suspect, we could have the neighborhood revitalization people handle the promotion of volunteering on a local level and wait and see how the federal budget pans out in a few years, if they're gonna keep this program or not. Because we'll get it started and then it'll be abolished and we're gonna be in total confusion. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves, I would encourage you to talk to Kevin McCarthy about, I don't know about Buck, 'cause he's retiring.
Mr. Nito. Director. Thank you.
In any event, so I'm quite, actually quite well familiar with AmeriCorps. In the past, I've looked into it. They don't have anything that's directly in my particular career path, but I'm absolutely impressed by the, what the organization does. It's a fabulous opportunity for young people and actually they have programs for people of all ages, including Vista. Vista is, from the research I've done, is absolutely the cream of the crop of AmeriCorps. So I am thrilled that the City of Lancaster has had the opportunity to be able to partner with Vista. It really is, as it was described, very competitive for an organization to get a Vista bid. And that really speaks to what Lancaster is accomplishing to be able to have that competitiveness. I've spoken at this summit on multiple occasions about improving the image of Lancaster and that is clearly happening. Competitiveness is so important for a city to progress in these, in these kinds of financial So I'm absolutely, I would even say ecstatic. I'm ecstatic that AmeriCorps comes to Lancaster. I would strongly encourage this council to look, to make it a priority to bring further Vista contracts to the city in the future. Knowing what AmeriCorps Vista does, I'm, I can only just imagine the kinds of volunteer, volunteer organizing power that this project is going to bring to the city. So I just wanna speak outstandingly in support of this program and to strongly encourage the city to bring further Vista projects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and approve the memorandum of agreement establishing the partnership for the National Community Service Corporation.
I'll second that. Let's vote. Unanimous. Moving on to new business item two. Robert Neal.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, City Council members and Deputy Mayor. The city approved the Building Incentive Stimulus Program in February of 2010. Since its beginnings, the program has been very effective. This evening, I'm here to ask you to consider extending this program to June 30th, 2014. The reason an extension is being requested is that our community hasn't fully recovered from the devastating recession that's hit the Antelope Valley and especially the building industry in the Antelope Valley very hard. Lancaster's unemployment rate continues to be high and we have neighborhoods that are still yet to be complete. There's still work to be done. The situation has prompted builders, developers, and the building industry to approach the city and request the continuance of this program for another year. I believe there's a representative from the BIA that is here and I think you will hear from her. In the past, I've made presentations about the benefits of this program. The program has caused the completion of many neighborhoods and created substantial construction jobs. You may recall the photographs of some dramatic transformations made in our neighborhoods, transformations that builders were able to do because of the incentives provided in the Building Incentive Stimulus Program. For existing recorded tracks, the Building Incentive Stimulus Program waives 25% of the city's imposed development impact fees. Currently, these fees for new single-family residences averages about $11,400. The 25% discount will equate to about $2,850. In these same tracks, the program would also waive the requirement for landscaping in the rear and side yards when those yards are not visible from the street, resulting in possible additional savings of up to about $10,000 per dwelling. For commercial and industrial development, city-imposed impact fees would be deferred from building permit issuance to the certificate of occupancy. Staff anticipates that as many as 225 new homes may be built as developers take advantage of the extension of this, this program. The value of new construction would exceed $52 million and create over 175 local construction jobs. There is no fiscal impact for the deferral of commercial industrial impact fees other than the time of collection. Notwithstanding the fee reduction, staff expects to collect up to $2.5 million in building fees over the program extension. Therefore, it is the staff's recommendation that the Building Incentive Program be continued for fiscal year 2013 to 2014. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I do.
Yes, sir.
Aren't other cities copying what you started here?
I believe so and I think Marta could tell you about those cities, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good thing. Good knockoff. Means you're doing good work.
I think our staff is doing incredible work. I was, I was at a, an event Saturday in LA and to give you an example of who was there, the CEO of Amgen was there, talking about Lancaster. It was truly remarkable. I had no idea the impact we were making and who was watching and who was, who was, you know, listening. I was shocked. I mean, Amgen? You know, wow. Yeah, we're starting to have an impact. And Robert, that is in no small part to you. The creativity that you guys are demonstrating is, and the synergy that you guys seem to develop between yourselves is, is just amazing to behold and amazing to take credit for too, by the way. Michael Reeves. Now you're gonna have something really good to say, right? Really supportive, positive, you know, get us all in a good mood, right?
It gets more positive as I go along.
Okay, good.
Mayor Paris, Council, I object to this because I think that the, the council should be working toward preserving existing properties that have been here a while, not encourage the development of new properties while we have empty houses all over town that need to be occupied. Another thing that I object to is that we won't get these fees back, the 25% discount, until the property is occupied. Okay, that's fine. But in the meantime, these guys, developers, they get the 25% discount and also they don't have to landscape the rear or side yards of the, of the property. So for a while, we're gonna have houses that are not fully developed and we're not getting fees for them. And we, as we just discussed the budget, we're not in a position to be giving money away and wait for the money to come in. So for that, it may sound like a good idea, but I don't favor it. I think that we would be better off discontinuing this and emphasizing improvement of our existing housing in Lancaster.
Michael, that was the last item. When are you gonna get to the positive part?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Deputy Mayor. I appreciate having this item and being, having the opportunity to speak before you today. I'm here to support this program and the continuation of this program. It's been going for about three years and it has really helped our members to continue in a slow pace, but a better pace here than it has been in other cities. And I think it's been mutually beneficial to both the city and the home-building community and our members at large. To just respond a little bit to the questions that were asked, other cities have indeed taken, taken part or, and in some cases, all of the program and implemented it elsewhere and that's been good. It's definitely been talked about, and there are a lot of things that happen here in Lancaster that, when I go to our regional meetings, that are discussed, and we try to implement them elsewhere. So I want to thank you for being a leader, and I want to thank you for your support of our industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 13-25.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. I'm gonna vote no, just to see if it works. You know, I'm gonna go home, and she's gonna have a few things to say about that comment. Okay. It's to you, isn't it, Jerry? No, it's not. Okay.
CR1.
All right. Council reports?
Must be me. There's nothing really worth shaking to report in regards to the May 16th meeting, other than normal expenses, and me reinforcing to the staff that can't wait till we get that, those bonds remarketed. So I'm looking forward to that.
Good. Michael, I'm gonna put you on the public comments, because I don't think you actually comment on a council report. Okay. Thank you. I'll just add you to this. No action on the financing authority, no action on the housing authority, no action on the power authority, no action on the successor agency. You know, this sounds like that Bell thing, where you have all these agencies to make a lot of money. No, nobody's getting paid for those, are they? Okay, good. Thanks. I just wanted to double-check that. Okay, City Manager.
I just have one announcement. In the news, there's been a lot of comments about dust, and rather than talk about the drought or the vastness of the land here, it seems to have fallen on solar as the evil or the dust. And we've prepared a short video to just sort of show some of the things we do to mitigate it. It was Jason and my first foray into voice-overs, so please try to see beyond the voice-over. And it's a serious subject because I want you to see at the beginning the vastness of Lancaster and the small amount of areas that have planned solar or constructed solar. And I'm here to tell you, the cause of dust is wind and no rain. When there are construction sites, including solar, they do create dust. That's why we have mitigation plans. That's why the Air District with Vice Mayor Chris Scherz has rules for that. Some of the dust is unavoidable. What we hope to show you here is some of what we take into account. Plans that are done, projects that have not been started yet, and projects that are under construction. It's a three-minute video, and with your permission, I'd like to show it. Thank you. This short video is intended to show the solar projects in Lancaster and their various stages of development. As you can see on the map, green represents an active solar field. This is the west side of Lancaster. The blue represents those that are under construction. Yellow is projects that are approved but not yet under construction, and red is applications that we have received but not yet processed. This shows that same thing on the east side of Lancaster.
The site depicted here is the Lancaster Boulevard and 40th Street East. This is a project that was regularly monitored and required and currently under construction. As you'll see, it's required. A number of different requirements are placed on this property. One is watering is the main and highest priority, is that they're continually watered, so the dust is mitigated. In addition, there are requirements for wind screening, fencing, as well as erosion controls. This project is Avenue K8 and 40th Street East. As you can see, another mitigation measure is the wind screen, the wind fence, the short black fence there. That'll assist in keeping the wind down as well as protecting from erosion. Not only is there watering required on this site as well, there is erosion control mechanisms to assure that the facility doesn't leave dirt in the street, as well as that it doesn't leave dust in the air. This site under construction is Avenue H12 and 80th Street West. As you can see, the same mitigation measures are applied at this facility as well as the other facilities. Not only constant watering to keep the dust down, but also watering the mounds for removal and backfilling of the trenches, and the wind screening that you'll see in the back. The project here is Avenue K8 and 90th Street West. This project is completely constructed. It is just awaiting Edison interconnection. As you can see, some of the gravel that has been added on the thoroughfares and pathways reduce ongoing blowing dust, as well as the remediation and landscaping that's required to be placed for a long-term impact and long-term wind mitigation. This is, again, an example of an operational solar facility. As you can see at Avenue H and 100th Street West, there's landscaping that is required, gravel to mitigate any dust from the vehicles traveling in the area, as well as fencing and controlled gates and access points.
Here, we have an approved site at Avenue H and 80th Street West that is not under construction. During construction, some amount of dust is inevitable during construction, grading, et cetera. But it's very important that in the city of Lancaster, we make sure that the land is not disturbed prior to construction. Here, you see native vegetation. This site, a little bit dry because of the lack of rain, but it is not a graded site. This site is at Avenue J4 and 80th Street West, and again, you can see the native vegetation has not been disturbed and will not be disturbed until construction commences.
I'm curious, why do we grade them?
We're not supposed to. We're not supposed to.
No, I mean, why does the developer grade them? Why do you need to grade them to put up a...
Yeah, there's typically very little grading that goes on. A lot of the scraping and the removal of the, how do I say, the plants is a result of the actual construction activity. They do place piers in the ground that aren't typically foundations that are built. They just pound stakes in the ground that don't need grading. So a lot of it is just a result of the activities around those facilities, that you'll see the removal. They do, after a period of time, there will be revegetation as rain occurs and other things happen.
Okay. Thank you.
You wanna talk about the mulch with the AVA QMD?
One of the things we've tried to do in a couple of sites that are causing us safety issues is work with the AVA QMD and other providers to put mulch on properties to reduce dust. We're doing that on the east side now. It's something that farmers have done for years. We've had some good success. I give Jason and Robert a lot of credit for finding a lot of sources in Tehachapi, palm mulch from the city of Los Angeles, and putting it down, it seems to make a difference. It's sort of an experiment, if you will, or a pilot project that we've discussed with Vice Mayor Crisp. It appears to be working, and we're going to try to make sure that other people have that option for their properties. It's a low-cost way to control dust on your property. And I'd like to thank Brett Banks and the board of the AVA QMD for really helping us out.
Could you give us an update on the Cal Water?
Yes, I can. It's been hard to describe the level of anger that some of these folks have, and rightly so. And the community affected is very grateful to the council. You directed us to send a letter to the CUP, which we did, expressing our support, but we went one step further at your direction. We actually had our water attorney, Doug Everett, petition the CUP, and the city of Lancaster is now a recognized and official intervenor in the process. We've also engaged State Senator Knight, who has also sent a similar letter to the PUC asking for us to stop. The hearing has been pushed back to sometime in July, Robert. I don't have the exact date. And the Cal Water has requested to come down and meet with our council members to explain their side of the story, which is gonna be interesting.
Yeah, that's gonna be really interesting.
Can you tell them that we'd be glad to meet with them as long as we meet in the council chambers also?
Yeah, our condition was that you are not interested after talking to you guys and meeting with them individually unless they also agree to go to a council meeting where its agenda is and people can talk as well. They've agreed to those conditions, correct?
Thank you.
Are they gonna be medicated before they come? I mean, this isn't gonna be pretty. We may sell tickets, so we may be able to get a little revenue out of this.
Okay.
That's pretty good. Go find out. I guess if you could find anybody that would want to work for their water company. So it'd be interesting.
Okay, City Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You will find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible so that if necessary, the city manager, the city council, and staff will be able to get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Vincent?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Jerry Vincent. As a brief introduction, I am a resident of the High Desert Region for 35 years. I am employed by AT&amp;T and have been for 40 years. Tonight, I am serving as a volunteer leader for a worldwide humanitarian funding institution. Tonight, I am representing a foundation known as the H. Martin Foundation, Far East Humanitarian Services. And tonight, I want to present to the city council of Lancaster a solution to your economic problems. We believe the solution will be through the funding of the H. Martin Foundation. The H. Martin Foundation is now reaching out to the mayors of Southern California and the intent of collaborating with the local government to provide funding for all the city's various programs and projects to provide humanitarian services, to create local jobs, and in emergency, to provide disaster relief and community development. The H. Martin Foundation will consider 100 percent funding for all of the city's existing projects to aid the creation of local jobs and for providing family services. These families are privately owned, and they are recognized by the highest monetary authorities and by the United States government. To better define these funds, they are not a government grant, nor a donation, nor a loan. In addition to the funding of your city projects, the H. Martin Foundation would like to build a model project in the city with the naming H. Martin Global Community Center of Lancaster. This community center would centralize and house the different nonprofit organizations and humanitarian agencies. The results would be more services, more efficient services, and additional jobs to benefit the families in your community. The community center would also include family services such as free childcare, free before-and-after-school programs, and a complete scholarship program. To encourage the people to get off of welfare, the above-mentioned services will become part of the benefits for those working on these projects. Once a project or program is funded, the H. Martin Foundation would provide salaries with complete benefits for the leaders of collaborating humanitarian agencies and for all volunteers, thus an additional avenue of creating jobs. In conclusion, I will supply documentation for each council member, which will briefly explain how we hope to collaborate with you during your funding process, and also to help you better understand our plans. If interested, please contact me personally so that I may initiate an appointment with our funding principal. My contact information will be on the business card. Thank you, council members, for your time.
Thank you. Michael Reeves.
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I think the idea of a community center to house all the volunteer groups would be a fantastic thing. I'm speaking tonight about the AVTA. I got up before you and recommended that we put a bus bench at the corner of 10th Street West and Avenue K, and I noticed that Councilwoman Johnson was listening, and she wrote down these particulars, and shortly thereafter, we got the bus bench, and thank you very much. But I noticed as I go down 10th Street West, most of the bus benches are not covered, and I know that the Vice Mayor has mentioned that AVTA is in the processing of covering the bus benches. But for the safety and health of the bus riders, and also the appearance of, in our community, we go down the main boulevard in our community, 10th Street West, and we see people behind trees and telephone poles trying to shield themselves from the sun. Perhaps AVTA could begin a program to let the businesses buy cover for the bus benches, and they could advertise on it. That's one solution. It really is a shame when you see people trying to protect themselves against the wind and the cold and the heat, and when it could be done with a canopy over the bus bench, and it would reflect highly on our community and would look better than having people hide behind telephone poles and trees, et cetera, to protect themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew, you too.
I was inspired recently by the online photographs from their wedding on the boulevard. And I am an avid wedding photographer myself by hobby, and I recently had the unique experience of, as a tourist, photographing a wedding up in Yosemite. And I paid attention to how Yosemite goes about promoting weddings in their park, and it's really quite the, they even have me intrigued to maybe even get Yosemite involved in my wedding someday. So I was just thinking that we really could make the boulevard a destination for weddings, not just marriages themselves, but any given aspect of a wedding. And I like that the Boulevard Association wants to make the donated wedding an annual affair. So I'm thinking that really, that we could really promote the boulevard as a regular kind of wedding destination. So one of the core ideas of the boulevard from its inception has been to create a family-friendly center in the community for people to go. And what more family-oriented than a wedding? And so I really would like to encourage the council and any affiliated parties involved with the boulevard to really look into promoting the boulevard as a place to involve in people's weddings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the speaker cards. Council announcements? Any comments?
Jazz Festival, June 15th, at the AV Fairgrounds.
Yes, I've heard they've already sold about 1,200 tickets.
I hear it's gonna be an exceptionally good deal. If they need tickets, they can call the fairgrounds.
Absolutely, and they can go on the website.
86060.
And they can go on the website, too, and purchase them.
So are you getting paid?
No. I do sit on the JPA at the fairgrounds, but I don't get paid.
Hmm, I didn't know that.
Yes, you do.
Well, I knew he sat. I just didn't know it wasn't a paid position. Okay, I have one thing. I would like DCSF to report to us what they're doing, to make certain what occurred in Palmdale does not happen to one of our kids, what changes they're making. Why, I don't necessarily need to know why that happened, but I think we do need to know what changes are being put in place to make certain that it doesn't happen in our city. I would like you to, Mr. Bozignian, I would like you to convey that request, and I would like him here at the next council meeting, with something in depth. This view that we just turn it over... This view that we just turn it over to them, the protection of our children, and not be allowed to know why this happened is beyond my comprehension, and we shouldn't tolerate it. Our kids have a right not to be tortured to death, and whatever broke down, I don't think we can do anything about that. But what we can do about is, what changes are they making? What are they gonna do different? How do we know this isn't going to happen to one of ours? And let's see what they do, okay? Thank you. Okay, we're now going to go into closed session. We have a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. We have three potential cases. We will confer with legal counsel over existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, and then we'll be back. What do you think, David? 10 minutes? Five minutes. We'll be back in five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council met in closed session in Government Code Section 54956.9D2 to discuss one potential case, gave direction to council concerning that potential matter, and did not meet with respect to, or discuss with respect to, any of the other matters listed on the closed session item.
Housing Authority meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, June 25th, 2013, at 5:00 p.m.
The City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, June 25th, 2013, at 5:00 p.m. Carol, my day is done, and I'm going to Bex.